At the City Council of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street. Our invocation will be presented by Reverend David Stewart of the First United Methodist Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be presented by Jude Funky of True 4166.
Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we come before you as a community this evening, seeking your wisdom as we gather here to make decisions. We come on day after celebrating a vision and a dream about being a community and a country and a people that includes everyone. Lord, help us to create that kind of community where all have an equal opportunity, where all have the opportunity to grow and to use their gifts. Lord, we pray for your Spirit and your wisdom to be in this meeting this evening, and that you would help us to have a vision of all that could possibly be in this community for lifting and encouraging and growing up new generations of people. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Stewart.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jude. Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fox?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
We have six persons.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on to the citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I believe we have two persons in the audience that would like to address the council. The first will be Diana Collard. And Ms. Collard, if you will just approach the podium there and state your name and address, please.
Okay, yes, it's me again, Diana Collard, 723 North Ninth Street. That's near the Ninth and Maud intersection. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is my fifth appearance at the City Council over the same issue of Jay's Corner Store at Ninth and Maud. They have been a serious nuisance in our neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. They caused a lot of problems for the park. We started a petition around, and at the beginning, I expected maybe 20 people to sign it. Well, more than 100 people signed this petition, asking for this place to be closed. They did remove the gambling machines, and that did help. When they closed at nine o'clock, that was definitely a help, but then they started staying open later. They still are a nuisance. They attract customers who are a problem, to say the least. And recently, they have been closed some, and I think it's because they're having trouble getting anyone to work there. Nevertheless, the place has still been a nuisance. I've had to call, and they have people who show up after I've gone to bed playing loud music. The people who work at the store do try to get them to stop, but by then, I'm already And it's just a nuisance. The people walk by, they drop trash everywhere. We have found needles thrown over the fence in our yard, as well as trash. And of course, it's not all of their customers, but, you know, who are these people? You know, I never saw them before the store was there. Anyway, that's what I have to say. I really would like to see this business gone.
Okay, thank you for your input, Ms. Collard. I believe we have another person here that would like to address the council, Joshua Please present your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Joshua Bishop. My address is 945 Ivadine Drive. And I wrote on the sheet that I wanted to talk about corner store gambling, and I guess it's a broader issue than that. When I think of a corner store, you think of places where you can get flour if you run out of flour. You run and grab a soda, pack a cigarette, something like that. But corner stores have become more than that. Last time I was in Jay's Corner Store, the one on Ninth and Maud, they had individual condoms that you could buy there at the counter as an impulse buy. It's not something you impulse buy. You know, it's these type of establishments that are not community-based, and they're not providing a service or goods that the community needs, I believe. So, you know, with that said, they pry on the vulnerable populations in those communities, having the gambling machines and having these impulse buys. And, you know, I just don't feel they belong in those communities where people, you know, need, you know, that support from their corner stores, so.
Okay, and you're referring to the gambling machines?
Correct.
Is there anything in addition besides to add to what Ms. Collard said?
No, that's all I have to say tonight.
Okay, well, we thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments regarding this matter?
I have been actively working with the neighborhood here as it is my ward. I think it's been brought to us before the hundreds of calls at this establishment. I know we tried to work on an agreement with their attorney, it seemed to help. That since ended, that was only a short-lived 60-day negotiation, and so they've, of course, seen an uptick in things. I also requested, because not only is this neighborhood the one that I receive calls on, they're just the ones that are the most vocal and show up, but I have since received from Jay's Corner Store on Broadway, so I decided to just get some information on that, as well as the Winning Circle located on North 10th. From our police chief, we've received 191 calls with 12 overdoses in 2022 from Jay's Corner Store on Broadway, and we've received 64 calls with alarming things such as stealing. The list goes on. I mean, I could read these forever. I've since received calls from patrons of businesses surrounding Winning Circle, that they no longer feel comfortable walking into a 20-year established business after dark. And my request is that, I don't know how this looks, but we enacted an ordinance for a reason because of certain establishments, and I would like to see us direct our city manager and city attorney to use this ordinance to revoke the license of Jay's Corner Store and the Winning Circle.
Okay, I believe that ordinance number, I was informed by a clerk, that we passed regarding business license revocation is number 22-38, and you are calling that we enact that ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, if not, we pass to enact that ordinance, and we refer that to our city manager to start the process on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so. Okay?
I believe we all received the consent agenda and make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, the consent agenda has been approved as presented.
I know, where's Robert?
Okay, item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider a resolution adopting the 2023 Butler County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Ozark-Foot Hills Regional Planning Commission is contracted by the Missouri Department of Homeland Security State Emergency Management Agency to update the Butler County Hazard Mitigation Plan every five years. Just a fun fact, I wrote the two prior to this one that's being adopted, that's being presented tonight. This plan must be adopted by the city for us to be eligible for certain federal hazard mitigation grant programs. The plan addresses natural hazards that could potentially impact Butler County. These include extreme heat, earthquake, tornadoes, wildfires, sinkholes, flooding, thunderstorms, droughts, and severe winter weather. It did include the draft of the plan on the OneDrive for you to review. It's a little over 200 pages. Not much changes, except for some state requirements and federal requirements from update to update, but.
I make a motion to move this to the voting session on February 6th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider change order number four relative to the industrial park infrastructure project number 2020 ED 01. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a change order for, like you said, the industrial infrastructure project that is the future site of True Manufacturing. There's two items that are part of this change order. The first one is to add 3,270 square yards of soil stabilization using lime at a cost of $71,940. Just, this grant, this project is 100% grant-funded. That increase would be paid for with grant funds. And the second component is a time extension. The project was originally scheduled to be completed on December 15th of 2022, and we're requesting an extension through March 30th of 2023.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session on February 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider amending the City of Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section 425.020, 425.140, and 425.150 relative to stormwater management. Mr. Sisk, our city planner, will present this.
This ordinance pertains to our MS4 permit with the state, and this is our municipal small, let's see if I can get this right, small storm system, sewer system. And some of the verbiage in it needs to change to match with the new permit that was issued in October of last year. So the Smith and Company has been working on this for us, and they have updated that verbiage to match what the state is looking for at this point. And this is under a bit of a time crunch. We have asked that you could workshop and vote on this tonight.
Make a motion that we move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sisk.
And I'll just hang out.
Yeah, I think we have another item here. Item D, the City Council will consider a recommendation from Plan and Zoning Commission to approve a request to vacate a 10-foot-by-100-foot alleyway lying between Lot 7, 8, 11, and 12 of Kinzer and Mingle subdivision. The applicant is the United Gospel Rescue Mission. Mr. Sisk?
So the situation is that, you may or may not know, the old Stranfield-Muffler Building, the mission has acquired this property, and at some point, they would like to tear down the buildings there and build a new structure on not just that lot, but the ones that also face oak. They have acquired one of those properties at this point. They're trying to acquire the other, but what they've asked is to vacate the alleyway that runs behind. There is a sewer service back there, and they're aware that moving and dismantling that line will be, the cost will be up to the mission. Reverend Kirk is aware of it, as well as his board, and they have agreed to that, so. Our recommendation was to vacate the alleyway.
Do they plan expanding?
Um.
Or do you know?
Yes, he kind of explained it. I believe the building will be a bit of a warehouse where their bundling operation will operate out of, and then the front would be, I believe, some public access, but basically tear down the old buildings there and build a nice new structure, so.
And obviously, there won't be any interference to any utilities there, so.
Well, originally, they had asked to vacate the street right away that runs between those as well. However, there are two sewer mains there, and so those would be very difficult to move and costly. So this one line that runs in the alleyway was a little more feasible, so they agree they would cover the cost of that if and when that needs to be done.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Sisk?
Make a motion to move this to the voting session on February 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item E, the City Council will consider amending the City of Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section 605.210 relative to inspection requirements for eating and drinking establishments by the Butler County Health Department. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our current city ordinance requires that all establishments within the city limits that sell food and or beverages be inspected by the Butler County Health Department within 90 days of the annual renewal of business licenses. All business licenses expire June 30th of each year. With the growing number of these businesses in the city, it's become overwhelming for two health department inspectors to complete all these inspections within that 90-day window prior to the business license renewals. In discussions with Mrs. Emily Gooden, Emily Gooden, the Director of the Butler County Health Department, I'm proposing that we modify our requirements for inspections to be extended out to 12 months from the current 90 days. A new business would still be required to have an inspection done within the 90 days prior to the city issuing the original business license. The health department responds to complaints, therefore, I feel comfortable proposing this change, as any establishment that's violating health code should be inspected due to complaints that were received. One of their health inspectors is here this evening. If you have any questions for him, or if you have any questions for me, Emily and I have been going back and forth, trying to find a solution to this problem for a few months now, and she talked to some other health department directors, I've talked to some other city managers, and kind of came up with a proposal to present to you this evening, so.
But a business really could go like two years without being inspected, right? I mean, if a new business comes in, and then one year, and then they have 12 months after that to inspect, it could, is that a problem?
When they renew, they'll have to have an inspection that's occurred within the past 12 months. So their inspection they bring to us at the time of their renewal has to be, cannot be more than 12 months old.
So is this aligned with other cities?
It is. It's all over the place. There are other cities in the state that have a very similar arrangement to this. There are some that's not even part of it, but, yeah, it's not, it was based on input that she and I both got.
Sure. So just so I understand correctly, right now, all business licenses are renewable June 30th?
June 30th, yes.
So they have until 90 days after that to get an inspection complete for all city businesses?
No, they, currently, 90 days prior to June 30th, they have to be inspected right now. So they're cramming every business in Popper Bluff, I mean, that doesn't, that's not just restaurants, that's grocery stores, and convenience stores, and everybody that sells food and drinks, they're having to inspect them within 90 days. There's only two of them.
They're going to inspect it prior to the renewal?
Yes.
But.
They have all year to do it rather than 90 days?
I would understand, 12 months after.
No, before.
Okay.
Before.
So they'll still be having annual inspection?
Yes.
It'll just be any time in that 12 months rather than 90 days before?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion to move this to the voting session until February 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a work swap agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a renewal and modification of an existing agreement that the city has with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. As part of this agreement, the city agrees to operate our street sweeper four times per year on MODOT-maintained routes. In exchange for the street sweeping, MODOT agrees to repaint the center line and edge line striping on Oak Grove and Shelby Road. This works out really well for us. It's, you know, we want to do our best to keep the city looking good anyway, so for us to be running our street sweeper up and down Westwood Boulevard and Pine is, you know, something that needs to be done on a more regular basis than they're going to anyway. And we don't have the equipment to do the striping on those two roadways. And so, you know, as opposed to us going out and investing a bunch of money to buy the equipment to stripe two roads, it's a good exchange for us. It's worked out well, you know, with this, the only change in this version is that it extends down to the new section of Shelby Road that wasn't included in that original agreement, so. Works out well for the street department and Jerry, and it works out well for them too, so.
I'll make a motion to move this to the voting session on February 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the City Council will discuss authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, at the general municipal election to be held April 4th, 2023, to consider imposing a local use tax at the same rate as the total sales tax rate, provided that if the local sales tax rate is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax rate shall also be reduced or raised by the same action. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's pretty sub-explanatory. I'm asking you, as a council, to place the internet use tax on the ballot for the April election.
Make a motion, we move it to the voting session being held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, action required items, item A, Bill Number 8444, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section 425.020, 425.140, and 425.150 relative to stormwater management.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8444.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordinances, Sections 425.020, 425.140, and 425.150, by deleting all of said sections and replacing them with new sections, 425.020, 425.140, and 425.150, relating to stormwater management.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8444.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordinances, Section 425020, 425.140, and 425.150, by deleting all of said sections and replacing them with new sections, 425.020, 425.140, and 425.150, relating to stormwater management.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8444.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
We have six yeses.
Bill Number 8444 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8445, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, at the general municipal election to be held April 4th, 2023, to consider imposing a local use tax at the same rate as the total sales tax rate, provided that if the local sales tax rate is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax rate shall be also, shall also be reduced or raised by the same action.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8445.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the same rate as the total local sales tax rate, provided that if the local sales tax is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax will be reduced or raised by the same action, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, for their approval at the general municipal election called and to be held in the City of Popper Bluff on April 4th, 2023.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8445.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the same rate as the total local sales tax rate, provided that if the local sales tax rate is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax will be reduced or raised by the same action, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Popper Bluff for their approval at the general municipal election called and to be held in the City of Popper Bluff on April 4th, 2023.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8445.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Really, I guess, a comment and question on this. I know we've, you know, tried to pass this several times, and each of us sitting here that helped approve the budget know where we are financially, and you've mentioned this, but I just publicly wanted to say that holding public meetings to discuss and educate our voters on this, this round, and what, you know, we plan to do with these funds and how it is going to better our city.
Yes, I think that's extremely important, that we do a better job of educating the public about not only what it is, but what your plans are with this, yes.
Right.
And I think, you know, we had mentioned a few of those, you know, I know one of Lisa's passions is mosquitoes, and I.
Yes. Anti-mosquitoes.
Yeah, hopefully, this will move forward this time. I know there's, information-wise, education-wise, there's been a couple of bulletins, and it seems like they get better each time, and a lot of education, some of our local service clubs, so I sure feel like this would be a good thing for the city. I think we're on a roll with a lot of good things happening, and this would help, so. Okay, we had a motion for adoption and a second, some input there. Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
We have six yeses.
Bill Number 8445 has been adopted. Mr. Winters, do we have a closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. Is. Okay, is there any further business before the council? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me. Manager. We do, we do. Mr. Winters?
I don't have much to report this evening, sir.
Okay, I guess we don't have a manager before, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sooner.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.